Hola, mi nombre es Monica Fabián y soy a la sede de YouTube y de Services. Bienvenidos, estoy aquí para explicar cómo poner la interpretación en español. Y pues tengo que decirte que estoy entendiendo, para Windows y Mac tienen que accionar el botón que dice "En su meeting webinar controls", los controles de webinar, en termino de interpretation, ese es el botón. Y después tienen que elegir el idioma que quieren escuchar. Y también pueden poner New Audio si solamente quieren escuchar el idioma interpretado. Debe tener que ir audio, sonido de la reunión por su, puesto por su televisor, audio, así pueden escuchar la transición, la traducción, por teléfono, normalmente, para Android y iPhone, o sea, para teléfono móvil, puede usar el otro, que tiene tres puntos, se llama Language Interpretation, y accionar, accionar el botón que dice que la opción de original audio, audio original, y después los distintos idiomas, también puede este poner New Audio Original para eso escuchar las traducciones, y después accionar, ah, esto es todo, esto es un evento.
Good evening, my name is Chris Hanaway, I'm Executive Director of Jacob Avery's David Brooks Southern, and on behalf of our co-hosts of Queens Post and Sunnyside Community Services, welcome to tonight's District Council District 22 Democratic Forum. Two thousand twenty-one will be a highly consequential year in New York City, with elections for a mayor, a comptroller, and thirty-five, counted thirty-five vacancies in the city council because of term limits. This includes in District Twenty-two, where longtime council member and term limited council member Costa Constenanitas is giving up his seat early to run a local cherished nonprofit. As two of the other leading nonprofits in West New Queens, Sunnyside Community Services and Resettlement serve tens of thousands of New Yorkers every year, and we see firsthand not only the challenges and needs affecting West New Queens residents, but even more importantly, the strengths, talents, and aspirations of those who call Astoria, Woodside, Jackson Heights, and East Elfer's home. That is why my colleague Judy Zangle from our sister southern house, Sunnyside Community Services, and I are so proud to be part of tonight's event. Thank you again to the Queens Post and to each of tonight's candidates, who have demonstrated their dedication to public service again and again, and who have agreed to join us for what promises to be a productive and informative discussion. Now let's get started. I'll turn it over now to my friend and colleague Christian Murray from Queens Post, who will go over some ground rules.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, again, it's Christian Murray here, I'm the co-publisher of the Queens Post, one is Serena Andres. Tonight I'm going to talk about the ground rules. First of all, I think candidates have one minute to introduce themselves and say why they're running for office. Then there'll be a series of other questions, led by each candidate who've had one minute to answer. There'll also be four lightning round questions, as in yes or no answers, and then there'll be some questions that Serena will ask over fielded by the partner. Thank you for coming tonight, and best wishes. How do you do?
Evening, everyone. I'm Judy Zangle, Executive Director of Sunnyside Community Services. Glad you're all here, and now we're going to start with introductions. Leonardo will start with you, and then your seats who have left, and if you could just say your name and how you decided to do this.
Sure, and I can lose the mask, right?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Judy, thank you, Christian, thank you to our hosts. My name is Leonardo Bolaro, and I am here today to ask for support from our voters in the upcoming June primary. I am the son of an old-school Sicilian immigrant family. The lessons we learned at home were very simple: you study hard, you work hard, and you give back to your community. As I've been going around and talking to folks in the district, there's a certain sense of anxiety that they have, based on how will we recover and how will we rebuild. That's why I'm running on a platform of investing in apprenticeship programs and job training, increasing our investments in transit, infrastructure, and housing, supporting our small businesses to full recovery, and making sure that kids have great education opportunities, all kids have great education opportunities.
Should we be looking towards y'all, or that way, for folks?
Does it matter? Okay, thank you. Hey, y'all, I'm Tiffany Caban, I'm in public defender, organizer, activist, queer Latina, raised by an elevator mechanic, and a domestic worker in a working-class family, and above all else, I'm a Queens girl, who has built a big, beautiful coalition of over fifty community-based organizations, labor unions, elected allies, that are ready to change the lives of working families in our community. I spoke to an organizer in Astoria Houses, Andre, he said, "Everyone tells you, it takes a village to raise a child, but who is uplifting and supporting the village? And that's the job of government." That's why I'm running for city council, because it's where the work is, and local doesn't mean small. I'm running, yes, to pick up the trash, to fill the potholes, to trim the trees, but also, I am running to legislate and set a budget in the largest, most powerful city government in our entire country, and I'm ready to do that on day one. I know we need solutions scaled to the size of the problems that we have, I have plans to do that. It's a continuation of the work I've already done, it'd be an honor to do it as your council member, so thank you.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for hosting this event, it's important to hear all the candidates, and I thank you for that. I think I'm the oldest running here for city council, I've done it before. I remember running in two thousand and one against Peter Malone Jr., and the hottest issue back then were the power plants in Astoria. And there was so much talk about reform, and this, and changes, and elimination, you know, hence, all these years passed and nothing happened really in Astoria. I'm also the son of an immigrant. I was born in this community, I was born on Thirty-First Avenue and Forty-Fifth Street, Boulevard Hospital. I grew up in this community, I went to the public schools in this community, I work and I continue to maintain an office in this community. This is a great community, but unfortunately, I don't think the issues are being addressed, the important issues, like crime, there's a tremendous crime problem in our area, homelessness, the emotionally disturbed, they need our assistance, businesses and homeowners are in need of help. Am I down? And then finally, we're cheating our children, we're abusing our children with this homeschooling.
Thank you so much. So, my name is Nick, and I'm a yoga instructor. If anyone listening is into yoga, I'm the owner of Yoga Agora, and so if you're into yoga, you may have taken my class over the years, or if you have a friend who's into yoga, they may have taken my class, and I'd certainly welcome you to ask them about me. But yeah, I'm making this pivot now into the world of politics, because I'm concerned about the physical and mental health of our city. I think by any objective measure, whether it's anecdotal or scientific, I think there's absolutely no question that our physical health and our mental health are in rapid decline. But it's okay, because we can fix that, there are highly effective, inexpensive ways that we can improve health and wellness, and I have a plan to do that. I've been practicing yoga for many, many years, I've been teaching yoga for many years, I've been running a small business for the last eleven years, and I've been working with a lot of brilliant grassroots community activists. So I'm ready to put forward a plan that I guarantee will significantly improve the health and wellness of our communities, and I look forward to sharing those ideas with you here tonight, thank you.
I'll wait till the camera's there. I'll wait till the camera's there. Hey there, I'm Caterina Cat Joena, I'm running for city council in District Twenty-two, so thank you Queens Post for hosting this forum. Like many candidates on stage, as well as many residents in their Queens, my parents left their countries in the nineties, settled in Queens, of all places, they settled in our great district. So I'm trying to represent them, as well as any other candidates and any other residents who are immigrants, I'm also trying to represent people who were born and raised here, like I was, people who are so proud to call this place home, people who have been here for generations, and people who've left their homes from other parts of the country, other parts of the world, to settle in our great district. I'm so proud that you guys chose our great area, but also, I know that we haven't improved in the last sixty years, and if we don't start now, we run the risk of losing diverse, talented people who come into our city. So I'm looking to make a change and making a tangible structure to our city, and I'm the best person to do it, because I'm so passionate about where I'm from, but also because you need fresh new ideas for our great city. So thank you enough, and I wish that you would support me on June twenty-second.
That's what happens when you wear hoop earrings, you should know better. But anyway, thank you so much for hosting us this evening, and forcing me to get out of my sweatpants for the evening. My name is Evy Hansopoulos, and I'm the daughter of working-class immigrant parents. I was the first in my family to graduate from high school and graduate from college. I have been an Astoria resident for twenty-two years, where I have been active as a community organizer, a public school parent leader, and a Community Board One member, where I chair the Housing Committee. I run an educational nonprofit called Global Kids that works across New York City public schools, and I'm running because I love this community, I know its needs, and I know its problems. I have been on the ground, working on a host of issues with people all across the district, of diverse backgrounds, on issues like affordable housing, education, climate justice, and over the past year, COVID relief. I want to bring my tenacity, I want to bring my passion for service, my deep commitment to equity to the city council, and create a city and a district where everyone can live with dignity and be treated equitably. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Evy. The first question is going to field the tip of the needle, given the fact that the O D first, before it will just go around that way. All right, so Queens has the second highest number of older adults in the city, and that number will continue to rise. What are your plans to combat encageism, and maybe show the resources there, to enable the higher-class population?
Thank you for your question. I mean, a large part is, again, we manage one of the biggest budgets in the entire country, so putting our money where our values lie, and putting that money towards eldercare programs, deeply one-hundred percent affordable housing for folks, right, supportive services, and that comes from divesting from the bloated police budget and investing in that community. That comes from capital improvements to our transportation, right? We need to make sure, part of being able to age with dignity is being able to move freely with dignity. We have a ton of above-ground subway stations, only one has a working elevator, we're getting, it's a beautiful thing that we are getting a boon of resources from the state level, thanks to a bunch of really bold, progressive Democrats, but we have a responsibility to make those investments as well. Increases to the services around access-a-ride, making sure that all of our transportation stations are sheltered, you know, and then access to healthcare. We are losing hospital beds by the year, we don't have clinics in place, which should be one-stop shops for all of our community members, including our senior citizens. I think that was the time, yeah? Okay, thank you.
Same question, thank you. You know, we have to honor our seniors who have been at the forefront of this community, that built this community, and we're not doing enough, we're not doing enough for senior housing, that's a fact. We're not doing enough in terms of crime, seniors are the number-one targets for crime, and there's been a philosophical difference here in this situation right now, and I couldn't disagree with some people more, that we have to respect our police. Now, there are bad police, I've gone after them civilly, there are bad teachers, there are bad lawyers, there are bad doctors, there are bad nurses, but do we broad-brush and white, you know, like a broad-brush whitewash them all, that they're all no good? No, we have to respect everyone, and we have to make sure our seniors are safe. I talk to seniors every day, they're not safe going out, they're not safe taking the subway, they're afraid of being shoved onto the tracks. We've got to give them the support that they deserve, so that they can go out by themselves. We also have to support them with transportation. With the new BQX bus down on Twenty-first Street would be of great assistance to our seniors, thank you.
Thanks, John. Hey, listen, some people made out of fear when we asked the question initially, suppose we had some sound issues. So, you are asking the question, Chris, Matt. Queens has the second highest number of older adults in the city, and that number will continue to rise. What are your plans to combat encageism, and making sure that there are resources available to help them in their homes?
Sure, I have thought about this before, and I have this idea, it's a little out of the box, but I think it's worth talking about, which is that I've heard that as individuals age, one of the biggest fears and one of the greatest cause of injury, serious injury, is falling. And there are programs that we could put together to teach elderly individuals how to fall safely, you can actually practice falling. It's an esoteric idea, but it works, and I would love to put together community programs that could bring seniors together, it would improve their social health, it would improve community ties, and we could literally have, as strange as it sounds, I guarantee it would be really effective, we could have classes teaching the elderly how to fall properly to avoid injury later in life, improve their bone density, and help them keep them feeling safe.
Thank you. Evy, your turn.
So, thank you so much for that question. I find myself right now, I am the sandwich generation, I am raising my own children and taking care of my elderly mom at this point, but I was taking care of my dad, and my mom has Alzheimer's, and I feel that our seniors are neglected, and we need to engage them in helping us solve their problems. They want to stay in their homes, we should be finding ways to retrofit homes more, offering incentives to landlords to do so, so that people can age with dignity. We should be building more senior housing, I fully supported the project that Catholic Charities is going to build, to build one-hundred percent affordable senior housing, we need to do more of that, and use our public land for those purposes, as opposed to giving them to developers. We need to have more programs for seniors, so that they feel that they have a voice in their community. During this whole COVID crisis, we saw how they were late to get their vaccines, we did not go to them, we need to go where they are and serve them, and find out what their needs are, and respond appropriately by engaging them in coming up with the solutions, not imposing solutions on them.
Thank you. Caterina?
I grew up speaking Italian, it was my first language, and I was often trying to translate documents for my parents, my family, and for the massive amount of elderly neighbors in our block and alone Queens. Queens has a large, has the second-largest percentage of elderly neighbors, but it also has the largest percentage of immigrant neighbors. A good portion of the elderly immigration, elderly population are immigrants, so we need to offer first-class, any translation documents, any kind of government assistance that would protect people who don't speak our language and are vulnerable aged in society as it is. We also need to get increased mobility reasons. There's a great theory in politics, considered the curb theory, where if you do one small mobility-minded thing, it will improve the quality of life for other people. One example would be to cut curbs, so people who are wheelchair-bound, who are immobile impaired, will be more able to walk around, will be able to get to their places. So if we don't fix our infrastructure now, it will make it very hard for everyone else, no matter what age, to improve. And, again, increase grants to elderly homeowners.
Thank you. Leonardo?
Thank you, Christian. I think what COVID showed us is how vulnerable certain populations really were, and for especially our senior community. I live in a large apartment complex, and I can't tell you how many times there was deliveries from city services, those are so important, access-a-ride, making themselves available so our seniors could move around. So I totally do support making sure that we're fully funded in programs like that. One of the things that I heard a lot, or witnessed from my senior neighbors, was that feeling of isolation. A lot of times, they were living at home alone. I'm fortunate that I live in a really beautiful community, where we would check in on each other, we'd talk to each other, to the extent that they could go out, they would try, but we have to really prevent against that feeling of isolation for our seniors by funding our community centers, so they have places to go, where they're interacting with their peers, but also young children, as well as supporting senior houses. And I think there needs to be laws on the books that prevent any type of age discrimination for the ones that want to continue to work and have that dignity of work.
Thanks, Judy.
Second question, and John will start with you. Several nonprofit organizations, this is a question close to my heart, by the way, and throughout the city, stepped up in incredible ways during the pandemic to fill the gaps in what the government was not providing, and we will be critical towards the city's recovery. Many are facing shortfalls, what would you do to support and stabilize the nonprofit community?
Thank you. I think you're a hundred percent right. Nonprofits stepped up, we saw it with COVID, where they handed out meals, support, they provided counsel, attorneys for people in need, they helped businesses in need for PPP funds, for equipment, PPE equipment, masks, stuff like, you know, any sanitizers, items like that, yes. And, you know, all too often, there are people, again, let's talk about philosophy here, this is going to be a campaign on philosophy, people think the government should do everything, that the government should do everything. We've seen government fail us many a times, we've seen it in this city, and the nonprofits have succeeded, because their interests and belief systems are different than the public bureaucracy, where you have to go through various chains, and people, and bureaucrats, where the nonprofits succeed all the time, and we need to put more funding in nonprofits. The hosts of today's events, today's event proves that you're concerned with the community. Am I up in time?
Yes.
But thank you very much.
Nick?
Sure, so as far as I understand, the lifeblood of nonprofits comes in funding, so, grant funding, municipal funding, reworking a budget to pump as many dollars into them as we can. But beyond that, nonprofits need as much agency as possible, we have to give them levers of power, whether that means that we start leaning in nonprofits with building community land trusts, or we start leaning in to nonprofits with emergency relief, we give them agency, autonomy, and we give them tools to create their own programs, and we empower them. And then, maybe we could even look at ways that we could increase recruitment, we could just expand the size of nonprofits. Maybe that means extra grant funding to recruit new employees, or whether it means, you know, bringing nonprofit leaders into the behind-closed-doors meetings of municipal government, let's give them as much agency, power, and human resources as we can.
Evy?
So during COVID, we saw how nonprofits stepped up, and the nonprofit that I run, Global Kids, certainly did. We had to pivot, we had to shift from doing our work in person to virtual, and also provide those services and items that families needed to survive. So we really do need to support nonprofits, and the way that we do that is also baseline funding. What happens right now is every year, we struggle to get SYEP approved in the budget, we struggle for summer camps that families rely on, we're always fighting, we spend so much time and energy fighting for our funding, it should be baselined in the budget, that's number one. We also need to make sure that nonprofits get the money, they need to pay their workers fairly. It's very hard working in nonprofit, given the funding that we have, to pay a competitive salary. We need to increase the funding so that people can make a living doing this, and afford to live in New York City. And lastly, make sure that they have space, free or very low cost.
Caterina?
Like my other colleagues I mentioned before, our government has failed us essentially during COVID, so we needed, we were at a place where our nonprofits had to step up and do what our government couldn't do for ourselves, which is PPE, which is providing household care for people, providing food for people. So as a city council, which is a government-elected official, you would have to improve the funding, as everyone else has mentioned, but also improve recruitment tools. I did an internship in high school, because I am in poor low income, I was raised below the poverty level, so I got a job as a fifteen-year-old kid planting trees in Astoria, no less. We need to improve our ability to recruit people, and also make that kind of idea in our own civic-minded education system. My middle school offered a civically-minded project, and actually promoted people to go and work into the nonprofit sector. We need to improve recruitment, we need to improve funding, but we also need to prove, again, as people said, it's power and authority to get things done that the government can't do. So we need to prove what reasons the government hasn't done, do that our own internally, and also externally, help nonprofits survive in this economy.
Leonardo?
So, my career, I spent fifteen years in education and nonprofits. One of my roles was as a leader, a co-founder of a New York City high school, but also a project director, where I reported to the US government on grants. So I have a lot to say on this, a lot of ideas. Of course, one of the things as a council member could do for your nonprofits is through your discretionary funding, making sure you're allocating the amounts in an effective way that affects the most people. One of the things that I would hear a lot from foundations is that nonprofits need to collaborate together. I'd like to help lead that, or give examples on how that could happen. All nonprofits are going to the same funders, going after the same amount of money. So foundations appreciate when nonprofits come together. So what type of technical training can we give to nonprofit leaders, so they can be working together? The other thing as well is, we need to engage the private sector, the business sector, and the other philanthropists, foundations, to really step up in this time of need, and I'd like to be a part of that conversation.
Tiffany?
Thank you. I don't want to be redundant, so I kind of want to add to some of the things that folks said in terms of, like, yes, we need to fund our nonprofits, we also need to think about the fact that at the city level, we can't raise revenue, and so it's about shifting budgetary priorities. So I'm going to say it again, we're going to divest from the bloated police budget and invest in our communities, specifically our nonprofits. In addition to that, we have to think outside of just the services they provide. See, nonprofits, they engage in a bunch of different strategies, and this is where my organizer background comes in. They are providing, yes, direct services to their community members, but they're also working hard with issue-based campaigns to move legislation and governmental structures, and so making sure that, for example, I'm a former trial attorney, right, like, I am looking forward to having oversight hearings, to equip our communities with the information, the data that they need, to hold people's feet to the fire, and run more targeted, effective issue-based campaigns, so that they can better do their work. And then, you know, on top of that, just making sure that nonprofits in our community are better able to get the money more quickly. We know that the smaller nonprofits have a tougher time upfront, because they have to wait for the money to come in. Thank you, sorry.
Great, thanks, Stephanie. Okay, this is the third question, Nick, you're the first to field it. There's been a rise in gun violence in Western Queens. Obviously, we saw some shootings, three shootings in Woodside Houses, I guess it's in the twenty-six council district, but it's kind of in our backyard. What would you do to solve this problem?
Okay, so, I would start with a very sober understanding that crime, violent crime, is a source of deep-seated trauma. Nobody is born a criminal, and whenever we see violent crime, that was learned. So let's find out, how did this individual learn to commit violent crime? When we do a deep dive, a mindful deep dive into the sources of what we call, I'm going to use quotations, crime, we can start to effectively curb it in another direction. So that's going to take some, you know, deep-dive work. Now, more surface-level work, I love the idea of community-led safety and putting together community organizations to inspire residents of any community organizations to inspire residents of any community to disengage from crime or violent behavior. We can look at Queensbridge, Saturday nights, I'm going to give a plug for From the Ground Up, Sugar Ray, brilliant organizer, puts together like an arts and culture event on the basketball courts at Queensbridge. He is a community safety officer and we can lean into ideas like that to curb gun violence.
Thank you. Abby?
I mean, gun violence has been a problem for years. It's not a new problem and we see spikes, particularly when our communities are traumatized. So it's really important to look at what are the programs that will prevent this from occurring? What are the root causes of gun violence? It is, like Nick said, no one is born a criminal. What are the things that cause people to resort to gun violence? We have some of the strictest gun control laws here in New York City. However, there's a nationwide issue, we need to address that across the board. However, here, we could be working, funding organizations like Build 696 Queensbridge, other gun violence prevention programs that really look towards restorative practices to heal communities so that people are not resorting to gun violence. We need to house people, we need to make sure people have jobs, we need to make sure that everyone feels safe regardless of the color of your skin, and to really make sure that people don't resort to gun violence. We also need to look at just, not just shootings on the street, like the unfortunate cases that we had, but also things like suicide, domestic violence, and addressing those issues as well, because that is part of gun violence.
Thanks, Abby. Katerina?
We need to restructure the police budget to increase more people on the street who are not people from living in other parts of the city or outside of the city, which that means including NCOs, neighborhood coordination officers, who are, again, seen as friendly people who are not seen as people of higher authority. I think we need to restructure the police budget to remove actual people with arms on the street, making it a very antagonistic view of the police and offering more preventative measures. Again, that goes with restorative measures, including trying to get people who are healthcare professionals, or mental health professionals, trying to prevent crime from happening in the first place, which is what the police is meant to do. So any kind of gun action, frankly, is in the action of the police, unfortunately. We need to not only try to restructure the police budget, we also need to offer man-on-the-ground kind of help on people, so prevent them from ever committing a crime or prevent people from going down a negative route as it is. And again, that goes with education, that goes with health, and that goes with just gentle social care.
All right, thanks. Leonardo?
I think for far too long, we've been asking our police to be the first responders in a lot of our social issues, whether it's dealing with someone that is having a mental health issue, incident, a drug incident, a homeless incident. I'm all for holding the police department accountable for the people it serve, but I think it's important that we get them to focus and have their resources dedicated towards the things that they're meant to do, they're trained for, which is reducing crime and getting guns off the street. I do support a co-responder model where we're pairing up police officers with mental health experts that are going out to assess that first situation with the hopes of making sure the incident doesn't get escalated and the people are receiving the needs, the services that they do need. But in terms of, once again, allowing the police to focus on guns, we have to give them also the resources to do particular data sharing across borders, because that's where a lot of the guns are coming in. So let's let them focus on what they're really good at.
All right, thanks, Leonardo. Tiffany, over to you.
To put it simply, if it saves lives, it is worth doing. This is not a new problem, as was mentioned. My early, one of my earliest memories as a three-year-old was my mother hiding us behind a car in the middle of gunfire in Woodside. And, you know, so what we have to do is we have to expand crisis management, we have to expand our violence interruption groups like Cure Violence, like Life Camp, because quite honestly, what we know is that 2% to 5% of what the police do is what we think that they do. We give them over $6 billion to do it. 2% to 5% of their time is spent responding to violent crime, not interrupting, not preventing, responding to. 95% of that time, they're credentialing our press corps, they're taking kids' temperatures in schools, they're responding to people in mental health crisis, they're doing general traffic enforcement. We need to lean into what works. We know that if there is a well-resourced, fully-funded, fully-staffed violence interruption group in an area, gun violence goes down by upwards of 30 to up to 70 or 80% in those areas where police have not been able to do that. So we lean into what works and what saves lives. We fully fund violence interruption groups.
Thanks, Tiffany. John?
There's a double attack here. First, the attack is on the police, where people don't respect the police, they wanted to fund the police, they wanted to span the police, they want to make the police the enemy, can't do that. It's like being in a classroom. If you're going to demonize the teacher, you're not going to have successful kids. We're not going to have a successful community if we demonize our police, as some people want to do. But gun violence is up because of the bail system that has failed us in Albany, that they passed this bail system. They created a cookie-cutter approach where everyone committing a certain crime is allowed out. We have to have accountability. Judges are supposed to be the accountable people to determine whether a person goes in or out based on a bail reform. We had a situation where a young kid was arrested five times for a gun and he kept coming out, coming out, coming out because of the bail reform law. We've just encouraged gangs to get bigger and more powerful because we are limiting and handcuffing the police. As far as the emotionally disturbed, they don't understand. I'm an EMT, EMS, and when we respond to these scenes, they are the most dangerous people. This is very important. Don't tell me you can't send a cop. As an EMT, I would have been killed three times if there wasn't a police officer behind me protecting me.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Okay. Thank you all. You've been great adhering to the time constraint, so thank you. This is the lightning round and we want you to respond yes or no. So if you can continue to use your self-restraint, we'd appreciate that. We're going to start with Abby. And a couple of you have already answered this, so it should be very easy. Would you advocate for reducing police funding if elected?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next question. Many people argue that the gifted and talented programs at New York City schools should be scrapped as a means to desegregate the public school system. Would you advocate for ending this program? Abby?
It's not a simple yes or no question, but I would say I would go for school-wide enrichment model. So, yes.
All right. Kat?
As a graduate of 122, no, but again, not a simple yes or no question.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Was it a yes or a no?
No. But again, not a simple question.
Leo?
No.
Tiffany?
Can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Sure. Many people argue that the gifted and talented programs at New York City schools should be scrapped as a means to desegregate the public school system. Would you advocate for ending this program?
I was a G and T kid and yes.
Okay. John?
No.
No.
We're going to begin with you, Katerina. Half of the community board appointments are made by council members. Should this practice continue?
No.
Yes.
Tiffany?
Yes, with community input.
No.
Nick?
No.
Abby?
Yes.
Okay. Leo? Do you think the DOT's decision to put down protected bicycle lanes on Crescent Street was the correct one?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Do you think the DOT's decision to put down protected bicycle lanes on Crescent Street was the correct one?
Yes, but they weren't truly protected. We needed quick curbs, we needed, you know, real hard protection. Somebody actually passed away in that bike lane because it wasn't properly protected.
Fair enough. John?
No. And like everyone else who wants to make a comment, it's devastating for the hospital that has emergency personnel trying to get through Crescent Street.
All right, thanks. Nick?
I like protected bike lanes, but no, Crescent didn't do it right. So I guess my answer would be no for Crescent Street.
Abby?
To the bike lane, yes, but it needs tweaks and modifications.
Okay.
Same thing for, yes, the bike lanes, we need more, better protected bike lanes.
All right, thanks, Kat. I'm going to ask one more question. The U L E R P process, who's turn is it?
I think it's Leonardo's.
Leonardo's.
Right?
All right. Leonardo, the U L E R P process, it's come into a lot of criticism in terms of rezonings of, you know, big projects. Do you think it's an effective process or would you advocate change?
I support a comprehensive planning model to development. And the reason why is because the U L E R P process allows for a reactive community response to a lot of development. So whether it's being driven by administration or the developers, the community then responds. With the community, with the planning process that's put out there by Speaker Johnson, it's the community that would drive more of that conversation. So I think the process needs to be followed more around the comprehensive planning model, ways to improve the U L E R P process, as well as to speed up. Right now, a lot of the things are being done on a sequential basis. If we could then, rather than just waiting for one part to stop and the other one to begin, we could be doing them on parallel tracks.
All right, thanks, Tiffany.
Is this a minute-long question?
Yes, it is.
Got it. All right. So no, I don't think that it's effective. We have to turn it on its head. Right now, we have a model where, and I agree, we need a comprehensive, you know, planning model, but I actually think Corey Johnson's is not good enough. It's not the thing that we need. We need to flip it on its head. Right now, we have a model where, you know, corporate developers and private interests can come in and extract wealth from our communities, proposing projects, and then there's limited input and, you know, you have these high luxury, you know, skyrisers that are half-empty while what we get is like maybe a grocery store or something like that. We're fighting over scraps, right? It needs to be turned on its head. Communities should be ideating what needs we need met in our communities and then going out to developers and saying, hey, meet this, right? We have to make sure that we are not extracting that wealth from our communities, that we're taking care of folks, and that we're doing a couple of different things. We need to stop displacement and gentrification. We need to deeply invest in affordable, existing affordable housing, create truly affordable housing for those in the gap, and then create opportunities for more, you know, resident and tenant control. We need to lean into community land trust models. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tiffany. John, over to you.
I'm against the U L E R P process. It's a process that was designed to allow certain people with, who have a lot of money, hire lobbyists, hire special interests, hire ex-politicians to advocate to change the zoning on a piece of property that their next-door neighbor doesn't have that luxury. It's like giving out a winning Lotto ticket to the landowner, and that's wrong because it not only bypasses the community board's position on the issue, but it just demonstrates again how certain people have access in government and other people don't. And this is the perfect example where you've got to eliminate it because even, we've seen throughout the city dishonest city council people using this proposal to get donations and to get money coming their way and to get union support their way. It's part of the process and it needs to be changed because it's not a true process.
Thank you, John. Nick?
Yeah, I mean, U L E R P is such a joke. It's one of the saddest pieces of political theater I've ever seen in my life. You have a community board that weighs in, but their weigh-in means nothing. And then you have this borough president that weighs in and that doesn't mean anything. And the borough president, that's a bit of a useless office, I'm sorry, but they weigh in and their voice means nothing. And then it goes to the council member, which is kind of nice, like, that's okay. The best way to do it, community boards know what communities need. Give the power to the community board itself. And in terms of appointing the community board, I hope my yes/no question wasn't wrong because a community board should be elected by the community themselves. Right now, they're appointed by the borough president. I think that's a huge mistake. So if we have a community board appointed by the members of the community, they can determine for themselves what rezonings they want to pass or not. It's really sad and it's kind of pathetic that government operates with a U L E R P process.
All right, thanks, Nick. Over to you, Abby.
So I've been on the community board for 11 years and I have been the most outspoken critic about U L E R P and also the kind of development that's been going on in our community. I am not taking money from real estate developers because they have great influence in the U L E R P process. By the time it gets to be certified by city planning, the deal has already been done. And so U L E R P is really just, I think, you know, it is, in a way, political theater. There is no real, there's not enough influence that the community board or even the borough president can have because they're advisory. And what we get instead is affordable housing that is not affordable. We get loss of manufacturing space and jobs, and we get burdens on our infrastructure through this process that the developers never pay for. So I believe in fully revamping, revising, doing over U L E R P and actually engaging in a true community comprehensive planning model, but not the one that is before us in the city council that's been proposed by Corey Johnson, because that, once again, puts developers first and the community last.
Thanks. Abby? Oh, sorry, Kat?
Again, I obviously want to revise and reissue and we look at the U L E R P process. As a friend of mine said during HQ2, you live in U L E R P. Again, essentially, we shouldn't be giving a community board that has 50 people the power to make, again, an advisory, no, as anything. Over 100,000 people live in the district. But again, we also need to look at why people are applying for the U L E R P process to begin with. I agree in a certain point that developers need to build things. And again, if we don't build housing, then we can't actually have a large housing stock in our community. At the same time, if developers are applying for U L E R P, it means that there is something wrong with the zoning crisis, with our zoning laws. Our zoning laws have not been updated since 1970s and even then, it has been fairly updated since 1917 when it originally was instituted. So we need to revise our zoning laws. We also need to revise the process to make it less likely, less long, less lengthy, and have more quality community input from people. So I am proposing having developers on their dime, send out letters and any other kinds of forms, communications to every single resident district, tell them their plans and go back to the community board, go back to the Queensborough President and the city council and have them all decide on what's going to happen in their community.
All right, thanks. Serena?
Hi, everyone. So we received several questions from the public and I have one here that really resonated from a lot of our readers, a lot of from those who send in questions. As we all know, there are transit deserts in the 22nd District, such as below 21st Street, towards Astoria Houses and sections of Astoria by East Elmhurst. If you are elected council member, what would you do to solve this? I guess we'll start with Tiffany, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Yes, it's a really important question. We have, like, horribly disinvested from west of 21st Street. I mean, it's a little bit better now because we have the ferry there, but like, that just speaks to the stark problems. You had the people who were the closest to the island of Manhattan having the longest commute to Manhattan. I think that we need more dedicated and protected bike and bus lanes. Obviously, like I talked about, adding capital improvements to all of our public transportation systems. But, you know, even on 21st Street, it's ripe for a dedicated bus lane, not just for in our district, but all around the city. You know, I am in support of and proposing adding 500 miles of protected bike lanes, 500 miles of protected bus lanes, so that every single New Yorker, not just the folks in our district, but throughout the city are about at less a quarter of a mile from either of those things.
John?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there are serious transportation problems in our district. The B Q X that was proposed where a bus would run from the beginning of Astoria, 19th Avenue, all the way into Brooklyn, down 21st Street would be ideal to serve that part of the district. We need to advocate that and provide the funding for that. Bike lanes are great, but when it's six feet of, I'm sorry, six inches of snow or 12 inches of snow and has ice, they're not practical. Seniors can't ride bikes for the most part, not all seniors, but most seniors can. So we have to explore other areas. Busing, we need more buses, we need to have more buses, reliable times that they appear in our neighborhoods. Often at times, they don't come, people have to wait more than they should. I advocate a ferry at 19th Avenue in Astoria. I advocate a ferry at 19th Avenue in Astoria. We should have a ferry right there to bring the people in that neighborhood into Manhattan. But we need to do a lot more for transportation.
Nick?
Yeah, bus lanes, definitely good. Dedicated bus lanes, awesome, especially if they can be clean, electric or hybrid buses, even better. Bike lanes, don't be afraid of bike lanes. I bike in the snow all the time. If you're tough, you can do it. It's not a big deal. You can figure it out. More bike lanes. Listen, even a trolley could be okay as long as there are no public-private partnerships. Public-private partnerships are a siren song that never end well. Direct city investment in our transit is the only way. And no more of this Albany, asking Albany for permission, what we can do transit-wise. That's so dumb. We'll figure it out on our own. We're a healthy, smart city. So even leaning into some ideas like what they did 14th Street in Manhattan, they kind of blocked it off to the cars so only buses could ride there, might work. We have to check in with the neighbors a little bit about that. But definitely buses, definitely bike lanes. We can get up there into East Elmhurst and so on, but stay away from public-private partnerships. You're Icarus flying to the sun if you get involved with that.
Abby?
So actually, if you look on my website, I very specifically referenced those two areas that you mentioned, east of 21st Street, I'm sorry, west of 21st Street and then East Elmhurst where they really are transit deserts. So we need busways, we need express bus service as well, dedicated bus lanes, expanding our bike infrastructure. More and more people are biking and we need to make it safe for people, both for the people who are biking as well as the drivers. Sometimes I drive and I like to have a protected bike lane because I know that it's safer for me and it's safer for the person who is cycling. We need to look at things like fare fare, so people are encouraged to take public transportation. And when these large developments are going up, we need the developers to pay for transit infrastructure and to reduce the amount of parking spaces and provide a shuttle bus service so that we're not bringing more cars to the street as well. But I really feel that those two areas have been neglected. We need to do something for those folks because we also want to reduce cars on the road. It's better for the environment, it's better for our health outcomes and particularly for those communities who do experience higher asthma rates and respiratory illnesses because of the pollution that we have. So looking at how we can expand our public transportation and infrastructure, I think is really important.
Caterina?
Three Bs, bikes, buses, boats, essentially. Again, I've biked every single day, including this winter when it was 17 inches of snow, let alone six. So I'm able to bike anywhere and we also need more protected bike lanes, park protected bike lanes and just again, areas between cars and cyclists. At the same time, we need to increase our waterways. BQX, for example, was just an effort from DDB to little Azio for those who don't know, in cahoots with Revny and other real estate developers. So we're going to stay away from our own version of BQX, increase our busways, make them expressways, try to get rid of traffic on streets and try to increase more mobility for people. Like I mentioned before, your first question, the majority of people who are over the age of 60 in our district are immigrants. They are not from the US. They also don't tend to have licenses, including my family, my own. I live on the border of East Elmhurst and Astoria. I walk 20 minutes every day to get to the train. I know how annoying it is. I also know how privileged I am to have that mobility to walk. We need to increase our busways to allow people who don't have, who can't drive or can't afford to pay for drives to get on the bus. We need to increase the ability to, again, increase infrastructure and transportation all over the district and into East Elmhurst.
Leonardo?
The greatest city in the world deserves the greatest transit system in the world and the way that we're set up with our current trains and subways are just not doing it enough. Like my colleagues, I would encourage greater investment in our buses to make them faster and more efficient. We need to explore more opportunities for dedicated bus lane, all-door boarding as well to speed up the buses, also using particular technology, signaling technology so that we're giving buses priority in the traffic flow. I think it's about time we realize our vision of an interconnected bike network across all five boroughs, so I would push for that. I would also encourage third-party companies to come into the space and expand their shared programs like City Bike, like Revel Scooter, so that we're giving even more transit options to residents that are living in transit deserts.
Okay, and we have a second question. We chose a second question and I guess just like me, a lot of our constituents in District 22, we want to know, do you believe that Amazon's last-minute decision not to open a headquarters in Long Island City was a victory or a missed opportunity for the district and why? And for this one, I think we'll start with John.
I think one of the greatest tragedies in my lifetime was when we lost Amazon. Now, if you could think of sports, there was LeBron James where he was the best player in the league and every city, every team vowed to get him. And when he decided to go with the team which was the Miami Heat, everybody went crazy. New York would have wanted to have that. We had the competition all across the United States and Amazon picked Long Island City. Now, many of us feel that, you know, there's too much overdevelopment, but if Long Island City didn't develop the way it was, Amazon would have never have decided to pick it. We've lost 20,000 jobs, over 10,000 union jobs from porters to maintenance people in buildings, construction jobs. The businesses were devastated, the peripheral businesses, the restaurants, bars, cafes, laundromats, dry cleaners, cab drivers devastated. We see now the impact of losing Amazon with this pandemic. It would have been a boost for us. We lost a school, they promised us a public school, they promised us a park, we lost that. And we saw recently-
John, you've got to wrap it up.
Where they proposed $2 billion to support affordable housing, Amazon. So when the people go against Amazon, they're doing the community service.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Mike.
Listen, we dodged a bullet that Amazon didn't come here. We should be thanking our lucky stars, Amazon didn't come here. Amazon's not cool. Amazon like represents everything that's wrong with capitalism. Those jobs, I've read about these jobs at Amazon. What I've read isn't good. A lot of people suffer there. We don't need Amazon jobs. Let's give members of this community their own small business jobs. Let's give them the resources they need for jobs with autonomy and agency, some more dignity and some self-determination. People like to work, yes, but they don't want to be slaves to large corporations like this. Amazon, whatever we want to say, you know, listen, small businesses lost so much money during COVID, Amazon's doing great. If Amazon wants to do something cool, send small businesses all the money that they have now lost and all the debt that they're in if Amazon wants to do something special for New York City. They don't need to set up a headquarters here. Amazon's not cool.
Abby?
So Amazon came anyway. I think we're forgetting that. No, they didn't build their headquarters, but they still opened distribution centers. They are here. We were willing to give away publicly-owned buildings, the DOE building, give it away to Amazon for them to make more profit. They weren't going to pay taxes. They are making billions. They are one of the most profitable companies. So while I understand people were frustrated that maybe some jobs would be lost, we have to ask ourselves the question, what kind of jobs and for whom are those jobs? Who would be benefiting? And it really wasn't going to be the really good-paying jobs that we wanted for the people in the community. So I, you know, I think that it was a victory because now we are demanding more when large parcels of land need to be developed. We should not be giving away public land like we were going to do. If the city can give it to a company like Amazon or is willing to do that, they should be willing to give that building to a community land trust, which is what I'm trying to do as part of the Western Queens Community Land Trust. We need to refocus really what development is about and who it should be for.
All right, thanks Abby.
Because I just want to put into very simple terms what Amazon did to show why it's such a good move that we didn't have it, they created an artificial competition between cities across the entire country to sell themselves to get Amazon, a multi, if not a multi-trillion-dollar company that is the largest company owned by the richest man in the world, to come to New York, which it was going to do anyway. So the fact that we lost or won Amazon to begin with was regardless of the fact that, again, Bezos has two homes, one in Virginia, one in New York, so it really wasn't an option as to where he would have gone either way. We didn't lose any jobs. Jobs still here, as my colleagues have mentioned before. And second of all, there weren't going to be jobs for people like you and me, there are going to be jobs for people who already are having those jobs, who are making 150 grand coding and have the kind of skills. We needed actual jobs for people who are living in this district, who are living in this area, who don't happen to have expertise. So their false promises of offering jobs are mostly just externalities that are given from those people. Whether that's delivery drivers going to one guy's house because he moved here, then that's not worth it, that's not 20,000 jobs. Look at Atlantic Yards, look at Hudson Yards, just for example, as what it means when we give away money for free to companies that don't deserve it.
Thanks, Caterina. Over to you, Leon.
I think one of the issues with the Amazon deal is very, it was done very much in secret. It was a deal that was arranged between the governor, to an extent, the mayor and the leadership at Amazon. My gripe with the deal was always if you're so proud of this deal, put it out to the public, critique even sooner than they did. I do not think the government should be subsidizing the richest, one of the richest companies in the world. The case point is that Google came here without subsidies and they continued to grow. To Abby's point, Amazon came here. I think that money, that public money is better suited for things towards investments in education, investment in housing, investments in infrastructure and transit to really affect the residents of New York City.
Thanks. Tiffany?
A lot of people reduced this to jobs or no jobs and that is absolutely a false choice, right? I sat in the council hearings where, you know, Amazon executives testified that they would fight unionization. We need good union jobs in the city and we can do it with a Green New Deal across the city. We could create 100,000 green union jobs. This is a New Deal moment in the worst economic crisis we've had since the Great Recession. We have to create new jobs. It should be in green infrastructure. We have a housing crisis. Over 800 people in our district are in shelters, hundreds more are housing insecure. We can create jobs by building more housing and, you know, we have to do it through creating more union jobs. I'm the product of a union family and it's not just about those workplace protections. Because of the union, my father was able to go to, like, it is how we get safe and healthy communities. He was able to access inpatient treatment and keep his job because of the union. He got fired because he was a whistleblower, got his job back because of the union. I was able as an adult to access therapy, to relate with the world in healthier ways because of the union. We need to be creating union jobs that help make our communities safer and healthier.
Thank you, Ms. Caban, and thank you, everybody. Thanks again to our candidates this evening who have really offered an amazing preview into their policy agendas and governance priorities and who have really demonstrated what a wealth of strong candidates District 22 has and how difficult a choice it will